Twenty four. I want to call to order and I see we have all members present, Mr. Moran, present by Zoom. I'm going to ask if there's any public comment unrelated to this petition. No public comment. Uh, there are no minutes to approve, so I'll call this first case that we have. This is zoning petition oh forty twenty-four oh forty-nine, the Falcon Point subdivision. We have a conditional use for plan development in our four single-family residential district for a nine lot, single-family subdivision. With following exceptions, one, reduce the lot size from twenty thousand square feet to seven thousand five 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 proposed lots, one through four. Approximately seven, five, six, one for lots five through nine. Two, reduce the required lot width from a hundred feet to approximately fifty-eight feet. Three, to increase the FAR from the required point three five to point four five. Matter was published in the Daily Herald on July sixteen, twenty twenty-four. Um, I have two exhibits. The first is petitioners, one, a survey. See if I can see that today, it's current, first to be a current survey. February twenty twenty-four, and then a site plan, which is petitioners exhibit number two. Uh, let me say at the outset, I will, petitioner will present his case, board last questions. All right, then, uh, we'll go to public comment for the audience. This court has adopted the rules, uh, for public comment. Published by the full county board, and that is that public comment is limited, you only get speed once. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Somebody represents a group of people or municipality or otherwise, I'll take you first. They will not take extensive, um, repetitive comments. So if you agree with the speaker before you just indicate your name, address, and that you agree with the speaker before you. And now I ask the petitioner to stand and all petitioners witnesses and be sworn in, please.
Would you raise your hands, please? You just silently swear affirm the testimony about to give to this cause and out here would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Do identify yourselves for the record. Tell us your name and address.
Lionel Martinez. Nick Farshado with Engineering.
Uh, who's your lawyer?
Lawyer.
Representing.
I'm not fair now, yes, developer.
Okay. Well, then step up to the microphone. My first, um, I'm a little confused as to why this is brought as a conditional use rather than a variation. So can you explain that point?
Um, that I would look to staff.
No, no, it's your case, sir.
Okay.
Um, you don't know.
So, so I don't know why it would be brought that way.
Okay. Well, go ahead and proceed.
Go ahead, uh, introduce myself, I'm Lionel Martinez. Uh, I own, help Martinez Construction, a home building company, and I'm also a partner in Falcon Point, uh, which is a development company who has purchased this piece of property. Uh, we are looking to develop it into, I mean, single-family homes. The objective of this is to try to create, um, uh, affordable housing in, like, a really hard to find. The price point of these houses is still, I would say, expensive, but it's more affordable than the surrounding areas. Um, the things we're asking for, you, you went over once, we're asking for a lot size reduction. Um, we're asking for, uh, the FAR structure increase, allowing more lot coverage. And we're asking for a lot width reduction. As far as kind of the, the how we came up with these numbers and how we came to this point, it's, it's very much in keeping with the neighborhood, so the lot sizes, the size houses we're trying to build there are very, very similar to the characteristic of the neighborhood. On the surrounding communities, lot sizes are very similar. Um, the houses that we're proposing, um, starting at like twenty-three hundred square feet, twenty-four hundred square feet, so a pretty, pretty modest house. As we go into we're kind of going into the, uh, the required questions that I need to answer. Are we going to impair light and air adjacent properties? We're, we're not, we're not doing anything other than single-family residence. You know, they're going to be two-story homes, they're going to be in characteristic of the neighbors, they're not going to impair and the neighborhood at all in any kind of negative way as far as light and air. We're not going to increase anything from, uh, fire hazards or dangers to the property again, it's just single-family residence. Uh, we're just looking to build, uh, some, some nice houses similar to what was done to the south. Uh, maybe a little bit, a little bit more tasteful, I'll say, I don't like to just build quite the same house, but we'll, um, yeah, we'll build a few, few different designs that kind of make them look, uh, fit in the neighborhood well. Uh, we're not going to diminish the value of the land, point number three. Um, if anything else, we're going to increase, um, value, I mean, right now, it's a, a single parcel with two homes, two homes on it, one pin, and a big barn, which is interesting. We're going to, we're going to definitely keep the value of the neighborhood the same and, and probably increase it by bringing some more new construction in the neighborhood. Um, traffic congestion, it, again, it's just single-family residence, so it's not, we're not doing industrial commercial, we're not asking for some crazy big building where it have a lot in about traffic, it's just single-family homes. Point number five, this is probably the one most people are interested in, who are here. Um, are we going to increase the potential for flooding and which situation properties? Um, and we're absolutely not, we're going to be improving, um, the property significantly. See, see the way it's nine, four, nine lots. A is our stormwater management, so we're planning on doing a retention pond, we're going to, we're going to take care of all of our water on site. We're not going to have any water that sheds off anywhere to the neighborhood. Um, this, this retention pond is going to have controlled release that then will release through the, uh, storm sewer that exists. So as far as a stormwater management, we're actually dramatically improving what's in there. It's, it's a different system than what the builder or the developer did to the south. For this one, definitely contain all of our, our storm water. Um, the size of the, uh, retention pond is, is actually going to be quite oversized and sits big enough, um, from an engine, engineering standpoint to, um, deal with a hundred percent paving of the property, so it means all the requirements, if we were a hundred percent paving, which we can't do, but uh, we do have quite a bit of protection in a, for, for some of the management. Is it, point number six was, are we going to incur any public expense for fire protection, rescue, relief? Again, it's, it's just single-family residents there, so we're not doing anything dramatic, uh, there's no change to, to what those services already would be doing, um, in the community there. Um, and then are we impairing public health, safety, comfort morals, general welfare? Um, of, of residents, occupation party, and, and again, no, it's, it's not. Again, just bringing single-family homes, single-family residents. Uh, some of the questions we get, you know, we're, we're also on the builder, so I will be building on, and the questions about construction come up about, you know, when are you going to work, is it going to be, is it going to make too much noise, are you going to work hours? So, so everything we do, we follow, um, this county board, so, so the rules that are in place, we'll follow. And I always tell neighbors, you know, if there's an issue, please come to me with any questions or whatnot. But I, I think, I think that's about it, so a little detail on this, I mean, we're looking for, um, lots to be roughly fifty-eight feet wide by a hundred hundred and, I believe it's a hundred and thirty-five feet deep. We're planning on um, we're, we're planning on kind of a, a storm sewer inlet system through here that's going to, going to catch our, our drainage down the side easements, it's going to let this water bring it to our pond, and our pond will eventually, um, discharge in, into the existing storm sewer system and take it away. I think, I think with that, I, I covered the points and I kind of gave the overview, so I would ask, if there's questions? Uh, that is.
Okay, um, I, I don't. So there, there's a question with respect to all conditional uses as to whether the petitioner, uh, suggests that the standards of the Illinois Supreme Court, living in the word case, are applicable to the petition's request for conditional use? And, uh, the exceptions, I, I trust you don't have a position on that?
I don't, I'm sorry.
Well, I don't have any questions, does anybody on the board?
I didn't build in township.
Uh, well, let me, Mr. Moran, do you have any questions?
No questions. Did you hear me?
Yeah. Kevin, that's, there's a little dispute as to who you are here, the picture isn't, uh, quite clear. This is Mr. Moran, right, from the war, on the war?
Yes.
Okay, Barry said this. Um, so I'll go down the line, are there any, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Carter, Mr. Jones, Zanderson? And, uh, same, no questions? Uh, I'll take, uh, public comment, uh, you have to be sworn in to make a public comment. Who here would like to make a statement in favor of or in opposition to this petition? Raise your hands. Two, three, four, five, two, six people, I can't see the lady in the back with the baby, is your hand up or? Is the baby standing? Would all of you stand and be sworn in to this?
Would you raise your hands, please? You just silently swear affirm the testimony about to give to this cause and out here would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Okay, sir, you could, uh, have a seat, um, who'd like to, is there anybody that represents a group? Or any attorneys representing a group? No municipalities or homeowners associations, okay, well then, just queue up however you like, and, uh, it was very polite. Uh, okay, who wants to be first? We're ready. No, step up if you would, so we can be, you can be heard and recorded. Okay, name, please, spell your last name, tell us your address. Then explain how close you are to this particular parcel. Then tell us whether you support or oppose, and then I'll give you your, uh, few minutes to make your statement, so name and address. Sure.
My name is Paul Mueller, M U E L L B R. I live at one N one-two-four Farwell Street. I am directly across from lot four and the beginning of lot A, my house is right here. Uh, don't know whether I support or, or against, but I do have a number of questions that I have at this point. Um, and a lot of it has to do with this, the outlot and the, and the pond. Uh, but okay, here's, here's how we'll do it, could you just, uh, list your questions and then we'll have the petitioner answer your questions and all the others at the end, sure, so we can go up there, just take some notes. Sure, my question is, uh, and I'm sorry, these are kind of, as you were discussing it, I was, so, the first is, um, the HOA, how is this pond going to be maintained? Is there an HOA that's going to be attached to this, that's going to maintain this pond? Or is it just going to be built and once all the houses are bought, are sold, it's on, it's on, that's one question. The other question that is, uh, with this is, are these homes going to be on well and septic or well and sewer? In the neighborhood along both sides, there's a mix of both. The, the water coming off of this lot, um, we, uh, the showman said that it was going to go to the, the existing, um, stormwater sewer, there is no stormwater sewer here. Uh, there's a culvert that runs along both sides of, there's a lot, there's a culvert here, and there's a culvert on this side where the stormwater collects, it runs down to another stormwater retention area before the end, and then a very large stormwater pond located at the park at the end of this street. Also, it should be said that this street is a dead end. Uh, there's no traffic going this, this, going this way or that. So that, those are really my questions, the HOA maintaining the pond, the well-inseptic question, stormwater not in place now, the culverts, uh, and then who's going to maintain it? Uh, also, you have a little bit of question of being across the street from this. Uh, I know you're not associated with it, but down the street, there's another something similar to this, that is nothing but weeds that come up to my, come up to my face. Now, there's no one there maintaining it, the homeowner that lives on the other side ends up having to take care of it once the, the bugs and the weeds and shit will be, so, those are the questions that I have.
All right, those are going to be pretty common questions. I think, so rather than have you, uh, answer at the end, are you prepared, sir, to answer these right now? Thank you, sir.
So, uh, Nick Farshado with ERA, engineer on this. Would that be the record to make claim? So, you, you, sir. Paul, just one second, I, I want to add something into the record.
No, you're just answering questions, you, you closed your case, now you're answering questions.
Oh, we can't add a site plan into the record?
It's already in the record. I admitted it as exhibit two.
There's a separate one in the back that I don't think has been, uh, admitted yet.
Okay. There's a site, site plan, you have two site plans?
It's just the engineering plan that I wanted to show, uh, how the stormwater is going to happen. It's not, I could talk about it.
Uh, you can enter your exhibit. Is it exhibit three?
It'd be exhibit three.
Well, has it been submitted to anybody?
Uh, no, we just brought it that we're, we came out and completed it.
Let's see. All right, let's, I'm going to rip through these questions. Let me guess, you propose to have a homeowners association, you haven't yet developed the homeowners association covenants and conditions, once you sell a certain number of the properties, you will turn the homeowners association over the home, is that right? Okay, correct, that's how that works.
It's a requirement, I found it.
I, in the future, after a certain portion of the properties are sold, there is, there, the oversight homeowners association is the group of people that own. Okay, what, let's go with the other questions.
Yeah, so the HOA will be handled, uh, and maintained by the HOA.
That's just my set, so go to a different question.
Correct, all right, I'm just going through my list. Uh, the well and septic, uh, we will be on well, there is sewer on both sides of, on Farwell and Morse, uh, the site plan this term.
No, just hold on. You can, when you speak, you can supplement whatever you want, but I have to maintain some order.
So all of the homes will be on water wells, all of the sanitary will be in sanitary sewers that are already existing. Uh, the existing stormwater sewer that we are connecting to is on Morse Street, uh, there is no storm sewer on Farwell, it's on Morse. Uh, and we're connecting right here on this side of the outlot A.
Would you indicate what direction of the lot that is?
Uh, that southeast and north side.
So that's north lot.
Can't see your ear on there. Uh, so it's northeast, the northeast side has an existing sewer that we are tying our storm sewer management system into. Uh, and then the last one I had was the weeds, uh, we follow the DuPage County Stormwater Management Ordinance. Uh, and detention basins are required to be native planted, uh, which this one will also be native planted. I know there's some subjectivity on what native planting is versus weeds, it will not be mowed, uh, but it will be, uh, there's a maintenance schedule, uh, of earnings and different things throughout, uh, the lifetime of it, that has to be maintained and is followed by the HOA.
So that answers all your questions, sir, because we're sure of them. That's it, okay, thank you very much, um, who's, who'd like to be next? Go right up.
Hello, my name is Lynn Kadel, um, you might spell that, please, K A, K A D E L. I'm a resident of one N one-hundred Farwell Street, so I will also be directly across from I got, yeah. Yeah, across from what they're calling the, uh, grassy, no, they're another weed area. Um, the first question I have is, um, we're, uh, based on what the, what the engineer stated, he had stated that that area is going to be a pond. Um, I, is it a pond or is it a retention? Um, or is a a, I'm sorry, I just forgot my word. Retention.
You mean, is it wet or dry?
No, no.
It's a retention area that is effectively a pond.
That's the same thing as a pond?
Well, it depends if it's wet or dry. And I don't know the answer.
Okay, yeah, that's, so that was one of my questions, um. My, my question raised tonight is that, um, I am, I am, I have no problem with the developments, I'll handle whatsoever, um, my questions have to do with that outlet and, um, or out lot and what's going to be done with it. I'm on Farwell Street, obviously, so in front of me will be about a lot and it looks like a lot and five, six of a second lot-ish. Um, but I don't have my question is that on the other side of this outlot is two houses, one, two. On the side of the second house is another outlet area.
Can I ask what you mean by outlot?
Well, they're calling this area that's going to be grassy and made
Is it on the, is it on the site plan there?
Yeah.
You're talking about the detention basin again?
Yes, it was posted on this banner as an outlet. So.
So what's your question?
My question is, is why would we build an outlet in the middle of a neighborhood that has another outlet? Two houses down, and then one more house, and then a ten-point, I think it's a ten-point-four acre park with a massive retention pond.
I'm sure I can answer that.
Oh, please.
Uh, it's a requirement of the stormwater department for the county, it's regular.
So the current, the current setup on our street just is not sufficient to support these houses?
I don't know if it's sufficient, I know that, uh, you're developing two acres, like this is being developed, we have an onsite retention detention, that's a requirement. Well, there's ways around it, but it's a requirement.
Again, not being well versed on, on kind of requirements such as this, my, my concern and, and somewhat objection is that this is breaking up a neighborhood into very distinct parts with multiple weedy growth areas and, um, a very, very large, um, retention pond. Um, my other question is that, um, I don't have any, this wasn't applied to us as, as residents, but when we talk about an HO homeowners association, um, the entire, uh, what was it called, the, the entire area of, um, Gary Ebony Gardens, um, just absolutely does not have homeowners associations. So, uh, not adjusted developments down this, on the other side of this street, to these sites. Um, and I do not want to be sucked up into an HOA, and I don't see any reason or need for an HOA.
Okay, that, that's a very common development thing, I, I don't want to go into, you know, the sort of basics.
Is this not the correct word to talk about this?
No, that question is sort of, you know, it's general real estate information, this homeowners association does not affect any home that is not part of this development. So that's what this homeowners association is, these lots, that's it.
So we are unable to have any influence on that?
No, no.
Okay, okay.
Nor are you bound by any of the covenants that may be adopted by the association.
Okay, okay, then my last question is, um, sir, you mentioned about there will be wells. Now, you didn't specify, is each house going to have their own individual well, or are you building a area well for, uh, eight, seven houses? Nine houses, I'm sorry, thank you, thank you. And, um, that could be my question, thank you.
Thank you very much, go ahead and answer.
Individual wells are common, uh, first question she had was, is it going to be a wet or a dry pot? It will be a dry pot. Uh, in main rainstorms, it will fill up and then it has to release in between forty-eight, ninety-six hours, uh, which is like two to four days. Um, the pond and HOA, you already talked about individual wells, each house will have an individual well, just like each of these houses to the south that needs additional.
Okay, thank you, uh, let's go, uh, let's see, you are the only other person in the front row, right? You guys weren't just sworn in, then if you go, then that would be a break.
My name's Joe Caruso, C A R U S O. I own the house, my son, family, rent renting, um, we're mainly concerned about the retention by, me and the house, right? Or um, you've pretty much answered most of the questions already, is there any fencing? About this, retention by? Any fencing? That's the only question I have.
Okay, show us your address and, uh,
One N, I'm, I'm sorry. One N one-one-one Farwell.
Okay, thank you, sir. It's not fenced, is it? Not yet decided? That, that's the kind of thing that's usually worked out, uh, with the stormwater, I'm not even sure fencing is allowed, just yes or no?
Because this is not a wet bottom, fencing would not be required and likely not allowed.
Hey, thank you. Now to the next row. Skipping over this lady and the end, this lady was sworn in.
My name is Judy Jones at one N zero five five Morse Street. I lived in that house fifty-two years with my family, um. So what I'm thinking, and because of my age and the equipment I use to see the flat, uh, better, I couldn't tell whether these new houses are set back, uh, more to the west or brought up to the east than the five houses that are existing on Morse Street to the south of this development. So it's just a question I have, does that bring these larger homes closer to the street? Because don't you measure by the center of the street and then out? With the county having the fifteen, either thirty-three of ease, easement, and then the front of the new house?
Well, you didn't, I think, let's let him, uh, some, go over that at the end, I want to get the rest of the questions, because that wasn't addressed at all. So he'll answer that in a few minutes.
Also, secondarily, I was wondering how many feet uh, would be between the two houses or each house? That's my lot.
Okay, thank you very much. You were next, sir.
Hello, Connor Cox, E L X, um, I live at one N zero five zero Morse. So I'm in the, the less tasteful house, it was just to the, just to the south best. Um, I had, my, my largest concern is, is water, um, I know you, you addressed that a little bit. Um, when they finished Morse Point, just to the south, there's some very heavy parade that was put in to ensure no water traveled north. Um, so now my lot slants pretty drastically on a portage to allow water to travel south off of this property right now. Um, so in heavier rainstorms, like the last two nights, we see water build up relatively high on that edge. Getting relatively close to flooding into our um window wells. Because that's right on that edge, so I'm very concerned with the grading and how that looks to ensure that water doesn't travel that direction. That's, that's my largest one. Um, we did just get new roads on both Farwell and Morse, which is probably kind of unfortunate timing. Um, I'd like some sort of confirmation that anything gets torn up there, we'll get that fixed. The standback in the street that Mr. Jones noted. Um, it's also a concern for me, we've, we've obviously got a beautiful setback next to us, we don't hardly see that house. So I know we won't be able to meet that, but ideally not something sticking out much further. The variance for the point four five F A R also concerned with, once again, tied to, tied to water. Offset around the side would be what's driving the distance off my house. I'd like to confirm that we can keep that at least in line with what we have on the other side. The, I believe, last one. Is the um. Yeah, the, my, my new wells, really, there's two that are existing already, so seven additional wells. Um, I wanna make sure that doesn't result in diminishing water volume quality for us right next door. Um, because I know how expensive it is to dig that well deeper.
Okay, thank you, sir. The last speaker. Mr. Cox, do you wanna indicate whether you support or oppose, or whether you just want your questions answered?
I, I support the development. I'm entirely sure I support exactly as opposed, but I, I'm excited to see something like you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Javerry Amir, last name M I R, I live on one N zero four zero Farwell Street and I live close to lot number one. So I am opposed to this um plan that is um presented tonight with. A lot that had two houses now being turned into nine single-family homes. Um, as of right now, most of the houses have well water and like the previous resident said, it is very expensive to dig those, um, you know, the access to the water a lot deeper. Um, you know, an area that had um two houses, two families, um, now turning into nine families and I think we are. Uh, the builders are not prepared to um evaluate the increased water usage on the street and stress the water tables that are available. Farwell Street is a dead end street, um, as of right now, there are two, two special needs buses that frequent that street and they have to turn at the end of the street. Um, with construction that's gonna happen, if that street is blocked, there's gonna be huge problems um for uh the families that utilize those special needs services with District two hundred. Um, the other uh problem is with these increased, like, let's say, for example, on Farwell, there's gonna be four new lots. Um, with driveways that will be decreased street parking on that street too. And also, um, my house is about fourteen hundred square feet, the new houses are gonna be twenty-five hundred square feet. Um, the gentleman said that the housing is affordable, around seven hundred thousand dollars. My house valued at around four hundred thousand dollars, um, it does not match the lot size that is available on Farwell Street. Um, about point two five acres of land that I have and my house is valued at four hundred thousand. Um, so seven hundred thousand dollars and calling that affordable housing does not match socioeconomic status that is. Available right now for the houses on Farwell Street. So those are my comments, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, you wanna answer any outstanding questions and then uh just one speaker? Well, if you need two people to answer questions, fine, and then I'll give you a few minutes for a summary, you know, closing statement.
I think, thanks for all your questions, um, so, so I think half of them were answered already, so I'm gonna start with uh. Uh, Mrs. Jones, you had set, setback questions. Um, so for the front yard setback, we're following the artwork zoning, which is thirty feet. And for the side yard setbacks, we're gonna follow the zoning as well, which is ten percent of the lot width. So it's roughly six feet is the minimum, the houses that I have designed um and proposing is actually a much larger setback than that. But the required, and most it will be the required setback. Which matches the, the development to the.
So you don't, you don't have footprints established for each of these.
So, so what I do is I, I know I'm a, I'm a built to suit, so I have one, we're gonna build a model.
We'll finish my question. You don't have the precise footprint, footprint for each of one of your sub parcels, but you will comply with whatever the setbacks.
Correct, right, so that's, that's front yard, side yard setback, um. And then the next questions were uh from Mr. Cox, and sorry, I didn't mean to insult that, what I mean is, I, I don't, I, I, I'm not a, a developer that, that builds a bunch of houses, I build, I build a suit for, so that's bad wording on my.
Right.
Part, um, as far, as far as flooding, um, you know, you're, I don't know how your uh little development was designed, oh, you, you can speak better, I guess, speak a little bit.
The developments to the south actually have uh the stormwater management placement in the backyards. This development was pre two thousand thirteen new ordinance, the new ordinance stormwater does not allow us to do that, that is why we have an outlot now. So the developments to the south, the reason the water is coming up in your backyard during heavy rainstorms is, is actually designed that way. Um, and no further water will go onto your property, if there's any water draining to your property now, all of the water, our property. Is gonna be forced to go to the outlot.
Can I add something to that? Completely accurate on how.
You weren't completely accurate?
No, he wasn't that, was not completely accurate on that one.
Uh, let, let me, let me finish, I'm not supposed to go back to you, but I wanna flesh out the facts as best I can, so. Are you done, sir? Did you finish your answer?
Yeah.
And Mr. Cox, can you speak from there, but speak loudly enough to be picked up by the recorder?
Sure, so while the vast majority of the water does flow into that. Detention area in the middle of our yard, my yard was created so that the water from my yard. If it's, if it's on the, it goes to the south end, it will go there, it flows to the north end, it comes out to uh. An inlet living right next to the street, right on the, right on the edge of your, your property.
Okay, so, so I don't wanna have a dialogue about this, but can I suggest to you that if this, if you learn that this project goes forward. And is ultimately favorably approved. Um. It would suggest that you communicate with the stormwater department as they go through their analysis, I don't know if you've been to the stormwater department. I don't have any comments from the stormwater department. Or you just say additional information is required, so if you communicate what you're trying to tell us for the stormwater department, I would hope that they would take your circumstance into consideration.
Okay, so at that point, is there, are there any approvals required at that point? Uh, that's, that's my concern as we move forward.
You guys invest a lot of money and that. Yeah, I understand, uh, well, I'll, I'll try to explain the process here. We're gonna undertake an evaluation of this case, render our determination, that will go to the county development committee, then it goes to the full county board. All that does is conceptually approve or deny the request that's before us, there's nothing to do. Stormwater requirements, building codes, or all of those things, so, you know, this is kinda like fishing license to certain people. That you're boating and doing the lake, but it's, this is far from being fully resolved.
Okay, so the document here is what we're, what we're approving, which says a five foot offset on the side and a point four five F A R, which is different than I think what.
It's the, the drain adjustment is the five, right?
Okay.
And so one thing to add to the stormwater, uh, per, what I have to sign as a professional engineer and what stormwater ordinance requires. We are not allowed to affect downstream or upstream receptors, which can be negatively to develop this product.
Okay, while you're up there, this is like a dialogue instead of hearing. You offered exhibit three, I don't know where it is, you didn't present it. Do you have, have you submitted exhibit three to somebody?
I, I submitted it as I was standing here.
Uh, where is it?
Right here.
Okay, so, if we get to look at it since it's an exhibit?
I, I can bring it over to you.
Is that exhibit? That's not exhibit two?
Nope.
Well, I can't.
This is the engineering document.
Right, and market is.
And I apologize, uh, in my experience as a board.
Just put exhibit three in and then take it. All right, closing statement?
You have to answer the last couple of questions, there's a couple more that didn't.
Oh, I lost track of those, go ahead and answer.
Um, so, so the new roads, it, it's, it's unfortunate for me that the new roads went in now, whether than later, because uh, so Milton Township owns the roads, they regulate those, they're very strict on the rules. So any damage that I do to the road is, if you can be sure that it will prepare and fix. And then there's a concern on blocking Farwell Street during construction, so that the process to actually block the street is very difficult. Um, it falls into the building department, but we don't block streets, um. And. Oh, the wells, so the well concern, um, I mean, the, the well company that I've already spoken to is the same company that did all the current wells on, on the. Properties to the south, um. What's that?
Three different companies.
Oh, there was three, he told me he did them all.
Okay, I, I can't keep going back and forth.
So, so, so that's very regulated as well, so they're not, they're not allowed to steal your water and impact you negatively, I mean, it's a very regulated, inspected thing, but it's stated in the law, it's a state regulated. Um, thing, so you should be, you will be fine with your consistent wells. Um, so then clo- closing comments, um, we hear your comments, I heard some concerns and I'll just tell you as a, I mean, I'm a resident of Wheaton, like, I was a long time resident of Wheaton, I'm a resident of Dubage County. I take this, your concerns very seriously, I wanna be a, a, a good neighbor as I move in and build in your neighborhood, um. And I, I want you guys to know, you know, you can reach out at any time with any comments, concerns, complaints, if guys are not doing things, but I, I try to be as courteous as I can. Hear your um questions and, and please, anyone wanna talk to me after I renew business card, you can reach out and we can discuss more stuff. Um, and for the board, you know, just hopefully we, we are able to address the, any concerns or questions you guys had and um would like to see this move forward and. Um, it's starting on some, some houses there.
Are you a contract purchaser or have you closed on your purchase?
Actually, I'd rather not say, but I closed, I own it.
Okay. Well, I, I only need to know that for reasons of uh, I'm trying to expedite.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I had, because of the environment we're in with real estate, I didn't have a choice.
Okay, um. So we'll close the hearing and uh consider the matter and our. I think we can get it on our August recommendation meeting, I forgot the date of that, it's August, August one. Okay, so I'm, on August one at five thirty in room thirty-five hundred B, we'll consider this case and whatever other cases come before us. That's a deliberation, gonna vote by this board, no further input from the public or the petitioner. So that closes this hearing, next item on the agenda is old business and new business, I believe there is no old business or new business. So we're ready to adjourn and I will uh close the uh meeting for the evening. Thank you very much.